I will start the Southampton Planning Board meeting this evening, November 4th, 2020. It's being recorded also on Channel 191 East Hampton Media. And our, all our board members are present except for Keith Locke at this point. And our first agenda item is an A and R submitted by Carol Goulet for 130, 132 Crooked Ledge Road. Larry Holmberg from Holmberg and Howe is here to present. So Larry, you have the floor.
Okay, let's see whether, okay, now, there it is. Hopefully you are now seeing my screen.
Not yet.
There we go.
There we go.
Okay.
Good, Larry, thank you.
I try.
So give us an explanation of what we're doing here. I know that it was one, one whole lot to begin with, and now you're subdividing it into two additional lots, correct?
That is correct. Little background, you'll see right in the middle of that long rectangle lot, which is labeled as Plan Book 99, page 100. That was done years ago and is where Carol Goulet's house currently sits and is known as 130 Crooked Ledge Road. And it's showing it, and in this case, it's in the butter to everything else. So 132 was roughly a 62 acre tract of land. That, the whole goal of this at this point was estate planning. The, I was under orders to get nearly equal acreage for Carol's three kids. That's one of the reasons you see some oddball shapes in here, to get the 20 acres for each one of them that was somewhat reasonable is what we've come up with. So we do, we are now showing three lots, all of them, I guess the minimum frontage is 179.56, and that's on Lot 2. The, as you see, they're all 20 acres plus in area. Frontage is not a problem on any of them. Access is not a problem on any of them. Lot 3, which does have some wetlands involved, actually has a curb cut in place already down in this area right here, which has been actively used. The rest of the lots, frontage coming in here, going into what is a somewhat of an overgrown field and in this area being woods. We are proposing a 30 foot, 5 foot right away. For the benefit of Lot 3, we know they cannot get from this section up through here because of wetland issues. There'd be wetland, possibly wetland violation if they even tried to bring, let alone a vehicle, maybe even an ATV. So we're making provisions for the right of way for their use.
Is that going to be a shared driveway, Larry?
Unknown at this time. We're making, future planning says we're going to make it possible that it would, but of course, we'd have to come back for a special permit, I believe, before the boards to, to make it such.
So does this tell us where the buildings will? Are we just talking about the subdivision of these, of this property?
We're only, we're only talking about the subdivision of the, the lots right now. There's nothing about any building envelopes where they should be for building permit in the future at all.
Yeah, as I said, this wasn't done for monetary gain at this time. It really was done for estate planning. And obviously, I do not know all the intricacies, but I was told, no one, no uncertain terms is to get it as close to equal area as I possibly could. Like I said, from a pure marketing standpoint, this is ugly. But again, I do what the client tells me to do, and the client usually has some reasons for it.
Paul, any questions?
Yeah, can you zoom in to Crooked Ledge, the, yeah, right there? I'm just trying to see what the dimensions are, what the dial looks like. I'm just trying to see.
So 25331 for Lot 1, 179.56 for Lot 2, and a whole lot of frontage, if you will, for Lot 3. But we definitely know there are wetlands in this area.
Yeah, it sure is an interesting configuration there, isn't it?
Yeah. Yeah, like I said, you know, sometimes, sometimes things are forced on you, and this was one of those times.
So, so all we're here doing is approving subdivision or not approving it? What else? I'm just trying to figure out.
We've, we've got to verify that the frontage is consistent with that district, which it is, and the acreage certainly is more so. And that, pretty much it, is that right, Paul?
Yeah, the only thing is, um, what's the, the narrowest lot you have there, Lot 3?
That's 100, yeah, that's 100 feet.
That's 100 feet width?
Yep.
Okay. What's the minimum in this, in this, in this, in this district? I thought it's 50, right? Is that the minimum?
What's the, what's the district here? Is it R?
R, probably.
Yeah.
R, 175 by 200 by 50.
So 50 is the minimum width?
Yes.
Okay, so he's got that.
Larry, you're probably, so we're probably going to need to assign addresses to these two, I'm assuming, correct?
Uh, yes.
All right, so this one in the, the middle where Mrs. Goulet lives already, that is 130 or 132?
That's, uh, that's, God, you've got, I've got that as 130.
Right, so she's assigned 130.
Yep.
Um, I don't happen to have the assessor's map handy here. Do you know if the numbers are running up or down there, left or right?
I have the assessor's map, sorry.
Have you got it there, Cindy?
Yeah.
So probably see what, and there, is there a butter down here in the bottom?
Yes, yep.
Is that like a grandfathered lot down there or something?
Uh, that was a lot, yes, I'm going to say that was created quite a while ago.
All right, and Cindy, can you see that little lot that's next to number parcel 3 to see if that has an address assigned to it?
All I have is parcel numbers on here and acreage. They don't have addresses, so they don't, you know, they don't coincide on, on the map that I'm looking at. I am looking at, if anybody knows any of the butter's names, I can look it up. I'm, I'm in the property cards right now in the system.
Well, the name on the butter is Rezniak.
Do you know how to spell that?
Yeah.
R E J N I A K.
John Rezniak, okay, there's Mark and there's John.
Mark, uh, John.
John.
Okay, let me just see what number, so he's at 126. Can you put your cursor on that, Larry, so I know which lot you mean? Okay, so that's 126 according to the property cards.
So it looks like it's running, it's running lower going.
Well, it's running higher as you go west.
Yes, correct. So, so 126, and Mrs. Goulet has already got 130, right?
Yeah.
So we should probably say that that one, parcel number, is that 2 or 1?
That's 2.
Parcel number 2 will be 128, correct?
Yes.
Yep.
All right, and so then you've got 130, and should that be 132 or should that be 132? Can you scroll more to the west there? Okay, William King, what's the number of William King?
Well, okay, Lot 1's probably should be 132 since that's what the original lot number.
Oh, okay, because I was confused on the application. It's got 130, 132, so it does include that.
Yes.
All right, so that, so Cindy, would you just verify that William King?
Okay, let me go back to the, that screen. William King's address is listed as 134.
Okay, so that number, Lot number 1 will remain at 132. Now we've got to go back east on the other side of 128. Is there in a, there's nothing that shows in a butter there on the other, or is there?
Pellegrini Development.
All right, find out what that might be.
Uh, I will, I think it's open space though, is there a house there?
No, that's open space.
Um, if I look up Pellegrini, I'll get, I think, his own address.
I mean, the, it's map 17, Lot 4 on the assessor's, so.
I can look it up by that, hold on a second, I can do it that way. is just listed as Pellegrini Development LLC, Crooked Ledge. It doesn't give me anything else in the, in the, in the property cards here.
Right, well, I'm going to assume, and I'll, I'll confirm this if you all will agree, agree with this. I'll, I'll confirm this with Martha Lemie at the assessor's office, but I'm just going to assume that that would be number 126. No, yes?
Let me look up 126, Paul, to see if we have any, anybody listed as a person who resides at 126 Crooked Ledge.
Cause, cause.
There is a 126.
That's, that's Rezniak, 126.
Rezniak is 126, okay, so let's, can you confirm anything for 124?
I'll do that now, hold on. 124.
There's no 124, there's a gap between 108 and 10, and 126.
There's a gap between 108 and 126.
Are you in the property cards, Paul, too?
Yep.
Oh, okay, good.
So what's your sense, go with 126 or do you want to lower it? Really, there's no need to lower it any, any further, correct? 120, 1, I mean, not 126, 124?
There's two parcels that are 126 on the property. Can I share my screen, Paul?
Go ahead.
I think someone's got to, stop.
He's got to, he's got to close out.
Larry, could you close out for a minute?
I am trying to.
On the bottom, it should say stop share.
Actually, hang on. Hmm.
All the way in the bottom, Larry?
Which bot, bottom of the zoom window?
Yeah.
Hmm.
Do you see your mute button, your stop video?
Negative.
Move your mouse down.
Okay, hang on, okay.
Paul, I get nothing on 124 Crooked Ledge. You got.
Yeah, but Paul is saying you've got, you've got two that are listed at 126?
Yeah, it's kind of weird. Paul, I think, oh, I got it, here we go.
All right, thanks, Larry.
It could be that Rezniak actually has two lots.
So you guys see my screen?
Yep.
So which way are we going? We're going this way?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so there's two 126s, so I think we ought to give them, maybe 122 is the highest number we have.
And also Lot number, uh, is it Lot number? Is that not number 1 or 3, Larry, the big lot there?
Uh, the, the one with the highest acreage is 3.
Right. Now, number 3, could that be subdivided again? It probably is not going to meet the requirements, is it?
No.
All right, so we wouldn't have to worry about, worried about a number there. So what are you suggesting on that then, 124, 122?
Yeah, I don't think 122 is where we want to be. Just in case, I want to correct this one here.
There's not, there's nobody listed as being at 124, so let me look up 122.
Yeah, Lot 3 is where Rezniak has his house, and Lot 12 is where he has his garage.
So there's nobody listed as 122 Crooked Ledge or 124 Crooked Ledge? So those two numbers are open.
That can't be subdivided again, Paul, or Cindy, you want to go with 124?
Yeah.
Paul?
Yeah.
All right.
So would you repeat all the numbers? So what have you got down there?
I have Lot number 1, 132. Lot number 2, 128. Lot number 3, 124.
No. 120, oh no, Lot 20, okay, 124, and then 126 is Rezniak?
Right, 128 is the new, Lot number 2.
Okay.
Number 130 is Mrs. Goulet. And then 132 is the other subdivided lot.
Okay.
Any other further questions on this A and R from Dan, Cindy, Paul?
I have no questions.
No, it's fine.
Hearing then, do I have a motion to approve the A and R as submitted? I, just to make it official in the record, I did receive a check for the two lots, $250, $125 each, so that's been received. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to endorse this A and R.
I second.
Motion has been made by Paul and seconded by Cindy. Any other further discussion? And I've been advised because of the Zoom regulations that I should be calling for a roll call vote because it's kind of uncertain sometimes when, even though most of our things recently have been majority, or when Jim was with us, an abstention, but I will have to call for a, a roll call vote, so, Paul? Oh, I'm sorry, any further discussion, Cindy?
I was just going to say Palmer, yes.
All right, Paul?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Ian?
Yep.
Ian, myself, yes, so we have four. The affirmative. And that's it, thank you, Larry, for guiding us through the process. Thank you, Cindy, and thank you, Paul.
The, just a housekeeping thing. How are you signing this and how do I get it back?
I will, right now, the board voted that only they approve that the chairman sign them, Registry of Deeds is aware of that. I'll sign them, Larry, and I think, how about if I drop it off at your office? Are you, you guys open in the afternoon?
If we're not busy, someone's here, just give us a, a call or email us and we can make sure.
Right.
Generally speaking, someone's here.
So I'll sign them and get them over to you, and also I have to get copies to Town Hall anyway, to the Conscom, the assessors, and Building Department. So I should have those to you by Friday.
Very good.
All right, thank you, Larry.
Thank you, have a good evening, folks.
Good night now. I really didn't have much other than that. Committee reports, Cindy, do you have anything to report, or Dan from PVPC?
Nothing from PVPC.
All right, Cindy, anything new?
Yes, actually, I just got off another meeting before this one with Master Plan Implementation Committee. The process is kind of closing in on the end, thank goodness, and that's just for the prioritization and the sort of moving forward aspect of, of the master plan implementation process. So what has been proposed is a joint meeting, if possible, with the planning board and select board, and the date that's been chosen is November 17th. And select board usually meets at 6 o'clock in the evening. I don't believe it'll be the first thing on the agenda, so we probably wouldn't be on until close to 7:00. And the idea is to hear the presentation from Ken Kamia regarding the outcome of the, of the survey and sort of the next steps. So I hope, I propose that we all be present, and I guess you'd have to post it as a meeting, Paul, in case there was a quorum.
And it's going to be on Zoom, I assume, too, right?
Absolutely, it'll be on Zoom, it'll be set up, it'll be on Zoom. It'll be set up by, probably by Ed Gibson, and that invitation will be, you know, from him.
Okay, so November 17th?
Yeah.
With the select board?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else, Cindy?
Um, let's see, the Open Space Committee is, is pretty active right now. We're act, we've actively been sending out letters to property owners who might have land sort of a conservation interest, just to sort of begin a discussion with them. And also, and I'm just going to hold this up at the screen, we've been sending out this postcard, which is describing a landowner webinar series that's sponsored through the University of Massachusetts, Mass. Woods. And we find, I'm finding out, because people are calling me back, that they got this postcard from, directly from Paul Contazaro at UMass, and it's just meant to give people an understanding of what options they might have. It doesn't tell people what to do with their land. It just says, these are various options available, and if conservation is something you were thinking of. I had a very interesting phone call from one landowner today, owns a big 100 parcel, 100 acre parcel up in the watershed area above Taykarmody, and she was really interested in talking to us. Sadly, the, the landowner just passed away three weeks ago. She was his daughter, and, you know, sort of picking up. She herself will, of course, be the one who's inheriting all the land, but she's very interested in, it's totally landlocked, undevelopable, and so she's really interested in knowing what, what kind of options are available for her. So it's, it's turning out to be positive. Let's see here, and I'm also in the Open Space and Recreation Plan Committee, representing the planning board. I'm told that that is really finished, and that the consultant, Paul, Ken Kamia, is about to put the like last minute touches on it, and it'll be posted for public viewing within the next couple of weeks. And that's very important, and then get that all approved, so any kind of opportunity for grant application will include a fully ratified Open Space and Recreation Plan. So that's moving along. And CPC, I went to one meeting, and it was enlightening and informational, but at that point in time, there were no specific projects to be considered. And I know Virginia's very eager to entertain projects. There certainly is, you know, balances available on the various accounts. Janet's on this call, she's much more fluent in the language of CPC, and I, I think I've said all that needs to be said, but Janet, if you can say if there's anything else I should say about CPC at this point?
Pardon me, I just had to unmute myself. No, we did not meet tonight, obviously, because of Virginia said we were waiting for some people to come forward with some proposals. So hopefully we'll have a reason to meet in September, but we haven't met a whole lot this year. And it's kind of disappointing.
So that's it for me, thanks, Janet.
Anything else, Janet, from your end?
No, no, I didn't know if you were going to discuss the Felton property, no, not, but I guess not.
I really can't because the hearing's been continued until the 18th. So we'll be doing that in two weeks.
So let me, let me apologize to Janet, because I suggested that you were going to, that Randall was coming tonight. I misunderstood the emails, he's not coming until the continuation. Apologies to you, Janet, sorry.
No, there's, we can't, we can't discuss anything outside the, the hearing regarding that.
Okay.
I understand, thank you.
So once again, for the public's benefit, for those who are interested, it'll be November 18th is the continuation of the public hearing for the Felton property at 34 High Street. Randall, and along with that, Randall had sent a memo, and I forwarded it to you people. I'm hoping that you saw that, that he met with them, I think, the day after our meeting or two days after. And they are engaging an engineer to come back with a more definitive plan about the site. I also sent you a copy of a communication from VHB and John Furman about the ongoing project at Hill Pharma Estates. And he just also called me on it. They're trying to make the deadline, supposedly, and Paul, you can, you can weigh in on this, but evidently, according to the regulations, he's, they've got to have the gravel and road compaction and the base coat down by November 13th, given the, the weather conditions, or pending the weather conditions. And if they come in, they don't make that deadline, so to speak. They have to come back in and ask if we will approve, you know, to extend that so they can get the work done before the asphalt plants close. But John said it's all contingent about, on the weather and the temperature, et cetera, but you're more knowledgeable about that than, than we are. Can you comment at all?
Yeah, you can, usually if the temperatures are 40 and rising, they can usually pave. But it's dependent on weather and, and temperature and, and conditions, so.
The, the construction company, not the developer, but the construction company knew they were, you know, up against it, and they said it was not their fault. It was the developers or their people that in charge of that properties that held things up, or they'd have had it done by now. So he, he knows what the situation is, and if they don't get it rectified by then, they'll have to wait till the spring. But John's on top of it, very, very good inspections he's been doing, and he's also been in concert with Randall Kemp about that at the highway. I received an email, again, I think I shared it with you, the Southampton Housing Authority wants to re-start up the meetings regarding affordable housing in Southampton, and without having to rewrite the entire inclusionary bylaw, which is pretty archaic, they're looking for ideas and looking for direction from us on how to, how we can create new housing by zoning and et cetera. So I reached out to Larry Smith, and he is happy to join the discussion. And he also asked me to include Ryan Gilher, which is kind of a dual role for him. He's on ZBA, but moreover, Ryan was in some of the preliminary discussions back in 2019. Ryan was in some of the, uh, preliminary discussions back in twenty nineteen, from the developer's standpoint, so, because Larry, and, and you guys know, it's not cut and dried. It, it's a great, it's a great idea. It's a great concept. Making it doable is not so easy, and Ryan can, can give his perspective on, uh, the costs associated with this, and how, how contractors or, or, um, developers can, can try to do this and make a profit. So that discussion, they wanted to get on board on the eighteenth, and seeing as the only thing we have right now is that uh, continuation of the public hearing, I told them we've got some open time there, so we'll do that after, uh, we take care of the Felton hearing. So that's on the eighteenth. And I sent an email to Patty Gambreini at PVPC about the MS four. We, we discussed last meeting about possibly getting that on the agenda, like, for December second, so we can get it on a public hearing and then hear it and edit it, however. Now, Cindy, if you would do me a favor and follow up with her, because when I asked her, I gave her the date, but I also asked her to help me with the, uh, the language for the legal advertising in the public hearing notice, and I did not hear back from her. It's been about five, six days, so hopefully she got it, but also I want to know if she's available on the second. If not, then the next date after that would be the sixteenth of December. So, um, and I'm assuming she wanted to be part of that hearing, correct?
Well, I don't, yes, I, I assume so. She may in her heart want to be there, but I think her contract ended with the project. But, uh, that, we can ask Patty that. I will follow up with her, and I'll try to find out, you know, whether or not she's considered to be still involved with it.
Was Ken Komea involved in that process right along too?
Only prelim, only in a very, um, narrow way. He, uh, he contributed some of the regulation, um, language, based on his background, specific to zoning, I think, but as far as the whole wetlands part of it, that, that is really Patty's expertise. Um, so I will follow up and find out, A, did she get the email, B, why didn't she answer, and if she can join us on the, on the second?
And also, maybe, yeah, and maybe you ask her if she cannot be a part of it, if, if they want their, uh, voice to be heard, or they want to monitor or add anything. Maybe she wants Ken to, uh, to sit in, I don't know.
Alright, I think she wants to get paid.
What's that, Paul?
She wants to get paid.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
I think if we want to have her, we got to pony up out of our funds.
Well, what, do you, would you, would you want to go it alone, or do you, do you think that we can handle it on our own?
Well, I took, I took the liberty to go back today and look at the draft of, uh, both the bylaw as well as the, um, regulations, you know, and there were some areas that were highlighted very clearly as things we needed to discuss, and see if, you know, we wanted to modify any of that language. That was looked on as a draft. So I think we need to do that, to, I don't know if we want to take a few minutes, maybe at the next meeting, like, twenty minutes to look at some of those areas, um, you know?
I, I, I think if we're having a public hearing, we can do it.
At the same time?
Do it at the same time, you know, keep on hashing it over and hashing it over again. I, to be quite honest with you, I'm, I don't know how much public input there's going to be, because a lot of it, even I don't understand, so I can't envision, uh, boards of people coming out.
Okay, well, well, it's specific to what Paul Fergal just asked, um, if her contract is, is exhausted for the project, which I believe I, I think that is the case, um, would we, as the planning board, have any funding available to pay for her time to, you know, appear, or not?
Oh, we, we've got funding. It's just a matter of what, you know, as Paul brought up, do you think we need her or not, Paul?
I think it would be beneficial for us to, to work with her. Um, I guess maybe we should just have a, um, independent, or not independent, but have a meeting without her, just to go over our highlighted points, we're not wasting time again. Um, just so we can kind of pinpoint and, 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 uh, go from there, um.
So you do want to go over the highlighted points?
Yeah, I think we should go, do that, right, right, without her being there.
Um, alright, so the eighteenth is coming up, and if we've got the Felton hearing, and we've got the housing authority, you want to, do you want to push that public hearing back then, and then we discuss the, uh, our end of it either on the eighteenth, or else we push it to December second?
Well, let me ask Paul a question. If, if you say we should consider going over this without Patty's presence, and listening to what Paul Demon just said, that we don't expect there to be a, you know, large number of the public attending a public hearing, why can't we do it at the same time? You know, if nobody showed up, we can just kind of utilize that time to, to hash out those highlighted areas. Why do we have to do it in two parts?
Well, what if there's something that we don't know? I guess the question, that, that, uh, if there's a, if there's a section that we're not certain about, that's my only question. Because I thought there are certain components that we wanted to make sure married well with, with our zoning and, um, to our zoning revisions that we were working with, with Larry, so that was my only question there.
Well, wouldn't, wouldn't anything that was developed on this, Paul, kind of supersede what was already there, or what Larry might propose, because they put so much time and effort into this?
Not necessarily. Um, I just want to make sure that things are consistent, not that we conflict, because what if we have certain language that has a requirement for X of something in our zoning, and then we're seeing X plus two on the stormwater? I just want to make sure everything is sort of, you know, we want to go in the right direction. Um, that's my, and frankly, I think Randall wants, I think we should invite Randall, because I think Randall wants to be part of it, too, from, from talking to him about this, so I think, you know, maybe we should have one session with him, so we can kind of get his take on certain things.
I think I, I support that idea. Randall was part of every single one of those meetings, and, uh, it's important for his performance of his job, I guess, to get this right, and the other person is Art Lawrence. He was a part with every single one of the meetings, um, and brings in the Conservation Commission part of it.
Right, so, uh, I'm going to recommend then that we delay the hearing then. And we look to schedule this discussion that we just been brought up on December, December second, and that way there, um, if there's any further things that have to be addressed, that would be on the sixteenth of December, and then we would schedule the public hearing for the first of the year, because there isn't another town meeting anytime soon on the horizon, so. What do you think on that?
Let, let me make sure I understand it. So the second of December, we will discuss the draft, including Randall and Art, and, you know, optional, if they can attend, and then, um, from there, go and schedule the public meeting for perhaps two weeks later.
Alright, so if you're in contact with Patty Gambreini, then tell her not to, you know, disregard my email, but I still need the language that's going to be required to do the public hearing, and I can just fill in the dates, but I want to make sure that the information's correct. So, um, I guess we won't ask her for any assistance at this point.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, that's all I have. Any, any other business from anyone?
Just a question about the minutes. Um, I, I know they, they get behind a little bit. You are posting some minutes. Are, are we reviewing drafts and approving minutes, or how's that working?
No, I've, I've posted them. Um, we haven't had the opportunity to approve anything, um, but they're posted. I suppose I could go back and copy a bunch of them out and send you an email to review them, but I've been posting them, has been going on, just so there's minutes on there.
Yeah.
In case anybody's got, uh, questions, but again, with the recordings available, somebody has a real issue that wants to know something specific, it's on the recording video.
Just a thought for, you know, that it's happening in a couple of the committees I'm working on, we're, we're emailing out draft minutes in advance. So therefore, people are not reading them at the time of, we're not flashing them on the screen.
Right, yeah.
We just simply say, do you read the draft? Any, any comments, and?
Correct. So I'll look into that and see if I can get you the old copies. Again, I don't have anything. Dan, you're pretty quiet tonight.
Well, I, I think you're talking about a lot of topics that kind of predated me joining, uh, the, the, the board. You know, a lot of the, the planning, or, um, um, sort of things that you've done before, so, uh, I, I, I'm trying to try to just understand it, you know?
Do, do you have the drafts of the MS four, uh, bylaw or in regulations? You do, I mean, or Paul?
I think you've got them, Dan, right?
That might have been the, one of the first things you sent me when I, when I started, so, yeah, I believe I have that one. Now, the only other thing I was thinking of is this, is the, you know, the affordable housing thing, and, um, I'm wondering, you know, are there other towns that, that we would want to, um, see what their approaches are for this, for solving these issues?
I think Larry Smith will address that.
Good.
That evening, um, because the bylaw that was, you know, drawn up many years ago had, had that in mind. It was, uh, comparisons made with communities our size, but
Yup.
It, it's all over the map.
And, and you said.
There's no consistency to it wherever you are.
Oh, I see. Yeah, you said something about it being archaic, so I.
Yeah, it's, if you ever have a chance to read it in the zoning bylaws, see if you understand it.
Okay, I'll check it out.
Anything else? Hearing then, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
I don't think I'll take a roll call for that.
Fine.
On the border, I'm scared.
Alright, good to see you all. I'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thanks, Paul, for your work.
Thank you.
Alright, good night, now. Take care.